Meeting of the Columbia County Planning Commission to order. If you'd stand with us, Commissioner Wilder will lead us to our indication. And Commissioner Henderson will lead us into pledge.
Talk about with us. Dear Lord, we thank you for this time together. We thank you for another beautiful day here in Columbia County, here in Georgia. We ask that you look over us, look over our first responders, those that keep us safe in our community and they're all across the world, our military. Look over what we do this evening. Let us make wise decisions that are in the best suit for all involved. And give us safe passage home at the end of our meeting. All these things in Jesus's name we ask. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance, flag, states of America, public stands, one nation, God. Thank you. If I could remind everyone, please silence their cell phones. We do have all five commissioners present tonight for 100% quorum. Gentlemen, you've had an opportunity to review the minutes of our March 18th meeting. There are no additions or amendments. I need a motion for approval.
I move.
Go here second.
Second.
All in favor? Motion to approve the minutes as submitted passes 5-0. Gentlemen, we've also had an opportunity to examine the agenda for tonight's meeting. If there are no additions or amendments to that agenda as you it was presented to you, I need a motion for approval.
I've moved.
Go here second.
Second.
All in favor? Approve the agenda as submitted passes 5-0. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the Planning Commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action on April 20th, 2021, in these chambers at 6:00 PM. If you wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Kara Harden, and she'll give you a request to speak for them. We're less formal in this setting. If during the public hearing portion of the meeting, you'd like to give us some additional information, please raise your hand. We'll ask you to come to the dais and spend three to five minutes giving us any additional information you'd like us to consider. If you have something that's not on the agenda tonight that you'd like to present, we also have a time at the end of the meeting for public comment. Raise your hand. We'll ask you to come up and take three to five minutes to give us whatever information that you'd like us to have. That being said, we'll dive right into our agenda. A little light tonight, so we'll try to get through it so y'all can get on to what's next. Mr. Butler, massage operator's license for Heather Gault.
No, Sheriff, this is a massage operator's license for Heather Gault. Her conditional use was approved on Tuesday by the Board of Commissioners at 106 Davis Road, Suite D. She's going to be offering on-premise and mobile massage services and meets all the requirements. That recommends approval of her request.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions to staff? Okay, I'll need a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the massage operator's license for Heather Gault at 138 Davis Road and mobile massage services.
Go here second.
Second.
Question? All in favor? Approve carries 5-0. Mr. Butler, got a massage operator's license for Lisa Ann Kessler, DBA Evans Therapeutic Massage.
Yeah, we sure do.
I have it on good authority that she has offered free massages for everybody that sits on the commission up here. I've known, I've known, I've known Lisa for some years, so I couldn't, I couldn't not mess with you.
Need a motion for that?
I do.
Anyway, she's gonna be at 548 Blackburn Drive, offering on-premise massage services. She meets all the requirements of the ordinance. That recommends approval.
Do I have a, any questions for staff? Any questions for Ms. Kessler? Okay. I'll need a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve age 282 massage operator's license for Ms. Lisa Ann Kessler doing business at Evans Therapeutic Massage.
Go here second.
Second.
All in favor? Motion to approve passes 5-0. Ms. Montgomery, we have a provisional home occupation for MPI Manufacturing Company?
Yes, sir. This is a request for provisional home occupation at 826 Lake Royal Drive. A currently zoned R1 single-family residential for a CNC machining business. This is the location of the property in Lake Royal, on a corner lot, Lake Royal Drive and Queens Court, and currently zoned R1 as are all surrounding properties. This is an older area of the site. We'll see here, they did build this garage in 2019. This is where the business is proposed to take place. The applicants have indicated they'll be using approximately 1,080 square feet of the existing detached garage for this business, which is less than 50% of the area of the house. The primary concerns with the home occupation would be traffic, light, noise, those kinds of issues. The applicant has indicated that they are operating on a contract basis, creating specialized parts for the aerospace and medical industries. Therefore, there's not walk-up traffic. It's not a storefront business, so there, there should be no additional traffic to the neighborhood as a result of the business. The garage also uses the existing driveway, so there's no additional curb cuts or a change to the character from the existing property. Noise would be an additional concern. The applicant has indicated that the machine itself is fully enclosed, and then the garage itself is well insulated by design to ensure that there's no noise audible outside of the existing building. The work will take place during normal business hours, 8 to 5, so there should be no issues with noise traffic on the site related to the provisional home occupation. Here's the existing building, and staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? This is not a public hearing. However, I do see Mr. Newton. Gentlemen, do you have any questions of, of the applicant? Okay. This is not a public hearing, so gentlemen, I'll need a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the provisional occupation for MPI Manufacturing.
Go here second.
Second.
Question? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 5-0. Ms. Montgomery, conceptual plan for Hamilton Grove.
Yes, sir. This is a concept plan for a property off Hamilton Road and Wrightsboro Road, currently zoned R2. This is the location of the property between Wrightsboro Road and Hamilton Road. The Baker Place dead-ending into the property on the north side. And the area of the site, it is currently undeveloped. The existing conditions of the site, it is crossed by two different streams and does have associated floodplain and wetlands. County staff have also indicated there may be additional wetlands that haven't been identified yet, so that may impact the, the final lot count. The topography generally, of course, slopes towards the streams and then west-east, heading kind of down Hamilton Road. Concept plan includes 139 single-family lots to be developed under the existing R2 zoning. There are lots on Hamilton Road or larger lots, they're approximately an acre and would have driveway access from Hamilton Road rather than an internal subdivision road. This does provide something of a transition from the R2 development to the lots on the rest of Hamilton Road, which are RA lots and quite a bit larger, that will require them to submit a change of conditions and variance requests to remove the buffer that's currently required along Hamilton Road. They've indicated that the creek and the wetlands floodplain behind it provides about 150 feet of space behind those lots before the actual R2 portion of the development starts. They are proposing that as basically the alternate buffer. The remainder of the lots are accessed from the internal subdivision roads, which are typical 50-foot right-of-way type roads. The road layout includes a couple cul-de-sacs, most of which appear to be less than 700 feet. The development is proposed to have two entrances, so it will meet the updated fire code requirements. The Wrightsboro Road entrance will be under the jurisdiction of DOT, so they will be responsible for determining whether left and right turn lanes are required. There will additionally be a traffic impact study on Hamilton Road to determine if there are any entrance improvements needed for that section. The site is expected to be masqueraded due to, due to the topography, so there is a 50-foot buffer around the site, which they have shown on the concept plan, and they will be required to have sidewalks and street trees throughout. They are providing public water and sewer to this development as required for the R2 zoning district, and they have shown their stormwater ponds, at least general concepts. Some of those will likely be modified as the engineering progresses. And staff is recommending approval of the concept plan.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? I've got one. If we could go back to the, to the overhead, are there going to be any issue with the stormwater detention areas being that close to state waters?
So, the current expressed concern is actually that they're on the other side of the state waters from the lots, so getting the water across that creek to the stormwater pond is going to be challenging. So, that's part of why the, the final design is likely going to change, especially with that pond kind of on the northern eastern side if we're actually have the site turned correctly. That one is separated from all of the lots by existing waterways, so the stormwater's going to get into those waterways before it hits that pond.
Uphill, isn't it?
It's downhill. If it's downhill, it's just going to get into the, it's just going to get, it's just going to drain into these waterways before it gets there.
Well, if the, the concept's going to change, why are we voting on a concept?
So, the, the final engineering will shift the stormwater ponds potentially, but the basic road layout access points are, are going to stay the same.
Gentlemen, any other questions? Okay, this is not a public hearing, so I'll need an, a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the concept plan for Hamilton Grove, tax map 52, parcel 37, off Wrightsboro and Hamilton Roads.
Go here second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 5-0. Ms. Montgomery will stay with you for a preliminary plat for River Island, Section 2, Phase 3.
Yes, sir. This is a preliminary plat for the next phase of River Island off Blackstone Camp Road, currently zoned planned unit development. This is the location of the project off Blackstone Camp. And the section includes 61 single-family lots with a minimum lot size of 10,162 square feet and an average lot size of 16,729 square feet. The front setbacks are 30 feet from the right-of-way and 10 feet from the side and rear property lines. This plat additionally includes extension of the walking trail from the previous amenity area into this section, as well as the sidewalk down Blackstone Camp Road, which will tie in to the crosswalk being completed with the Grand Oaks apartment project. And staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions to staff? And I'll need a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for River Island, Section 2, Phase 1.
Go here second.
Second.
Any discussion? Point of order.
Sorry, Phase 3, sorry.
Oh, Phase 3, I'm sorry. Okay, seconds still hold?
Hold it.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor? Approve carries 5-0. Okay, we've got six public hearings tonight. Ms. Mystery, first one's with you, file RZ 210401.
Yes, sir. This is a conditional use for massage, and the location is 1106 Fury's Lane on 0.41 acres, and the current zoning on the property is P1 Professional and C2 General Commercial. Here is the location of Fury's Ferry Road. And here you see the split zoning on the property. We just see 2 and P1. And here is a close-up of the aerial. So, the current office is Magnolia Chiropractic, and it's in Suite A. They want to expand into A and B together, so their request for the conditional use for massage is for the whole property. And because the subject property is in professional use, it shouldn't be impacted by the conditional use for the massage, and staff is in support of that request. Parcel is in the Baston Activity Center on the future land use map, intended for neighborhood services, shops, restaurants, and civic use. And staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Is the applicant here this evening? Yes, ma'am. Would you like to come forward and give us any additional information? All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve file RZ 210401, conditional use for massage at 1106 Fury's Lane.
Go here second.
Second.
Question? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 5-0. Mr. Butler, file RZ 210402.
Sheriff, it's a request for rezoning from S1 Special to M1 Light Industrial Office Warehouse uses over on Rose Court, Rose Lane, and off Rose Street. Little over five acres total for the entire project. This is the location of the property, again, off of Rose Street and Rose Court. And the current zoning, this was rezoned, I believe, last year for self-storage. I rezoned the S1 Special. The parcel here, the 253 Rose Street, was originally zoned to C2 with conditional use for storage. The S1 expanded it to both these parcels here. Request is eaten is for rezoning it to M1 Light Industrial. This is the aerial view of the site. Again, it is kind of an undeveloped site, but it is along Boba Jones Park, off of Boba Jones Expressway, heavily developed to this point. It shows the existing site. We'll have two photos of the property here, and currently undeveloped. Also, the plat of Rose Street, the other two parcels as well. So, overall, the applicant is requesting the M1. This is a concept. Again, this is not binding. It shows how they would develop the property. It shows approximately eight lots with, one thing to always consider is that there are buffers between M1 and also C2, so those will be in place on this property. So, again, this shows you the concept. There is some discussion, if we can go back real quick, about this road being private at some point to kind of open up more room on the lots themselves. Again, they are a little small for M1. So, overall, staff has, has recommended as approval of the request. Again, within this area, if we can go back to the zoning map real quick. Can't see it, but anyway, with the, the zoning of the area, again, it's predominantly C2. There are, there are properties that are, that were rezoned C3 back in 2018. Those properties were already in existence, so there was a rationale for going to that zoning. In terms of future land use, this area is within the Martinas Activity Center. Again, that area is, is more meant for commercial uses, not really meant for industrial. Are there industrial uses within it? Yes, there are. Again, they've been there for a while. In our opinion, establishing a new use is not really in keeping with the Martinas Activity Center. Due to those reasons, staff has recommended as approval of the request. The applicant, however, has requested to rezonate to C3, which is heavy commercial, which does not include light industrial, but does have the ability to request that at a later date as part of conditional use. If the commission does feel that that is acceptable, but it has some conditions recommended with that, that any, any building elevation facing a public street, private street, or the property line of tax map 078D, parcel 017D, the face of bricks, stucco stones, cement to this fiber board, or combination of those materials, also combination will actually be filed and recorded within 60 days of approval by the Board of Commissioners. That includes staff recommendation.
I've got one question. By already existing, you mean that there were ongoing businesses on those lots that were rezoned to C3?
That's correct. They're either looking to expand, or they have been vacant for a year. Again, that area, I should have given you a better aerial of the entire site. That area does have uses. There, there's contractors' offices, there are, you know, again, if you look here, that's a machine shop. Have a, you know, this is a cabinet shop. You have lots of stuff over in here that, you know, does not fit within the C2 anymore after the 2016 revision. You know, we have addressed these two properties, for instance, also this one as well, having changed to C3, but again, they're already in existence at the time. So, that's kind of where our, our recommendation is coming from with this request.
Okay, thanks, sir. Gentlemen, any questions to staff? This is a public hearing. Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Would you like to come forward and give us any additional information?
Over.
All right, gentlemen, any questions? All right, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny or to table. And we would handle this as two separate motions. If you want to deal with the M1 and then take up the C3, we'd need a separate motion to deal with C3. Lower's open for a motion.
I'll make a motion to disapprove file RZ 210402, rezoning from S1 to M1 at 253 Rose Street.
Go here second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor of the disapproval? Motion to disapprove carries 5-0. Now, if you'd like, you can deal with the C3. But I'm, I mean, you would, you would need to, to, since, since the applicant's requested it, you would need to have a motion to approve, deny or to table the C3 as well?
That's.
With.
With the conditions.
Conditions if you're so inclined to do so.
And that's the stance, and we didn't hear from the applicant. Is that, is that what you're saying, Will?
He can explain it further if he'd like to, explain why.
Yes, sir. Please come forward, sir. Give us your name, home address, and I guess you're looking for justifications for the C3 versus the M1.
Sir, my name's Gary Bennett, 5810 Carrot Hills Drive. I am the engineer for the client, Mr. Miles. Originally, we, he asked for rezoning for M1 because he just did one on Wrightsboro Road that he rezoned recently, wanted the same zoning here. They demanded a marketplace for that after discussions with Will, and I agree with Will that this is not an area for light industrial. C3 is a better fit, so that's why we, discussions with me and Mr. Butler, asked to request that at 2. That would.
So, C3 would give, give the owner what he wants with the office and light, I guess, light warehouse?
Correct. And that's what he see, he is seeing a demand for that, from, from different individuals trying to purchase or look at that property to do that. Apparently, and I'm not a real estate agent, but there's not many of those locations in town that would be suitable for that. Very similar to what Mr. Herbert did over here off of Court, something small for 2,000 to 5,000 square foot of office or warehouse space with an office that allow for some storage.
And these, these are C3 limits, the heavy truck?
So, C3 would have, you would have the ability to have a contractor's office with storage, which is what you predominantly see with that, that, that type of zoning. You'd also have self-storage there if you, if you felt the need. Really, what you're getting is a contractor's office with storage with C3. The M1, like, for instance, if you're putting in a machine shop as an example, a machine shop is explicitly listed as light industrial, it would have to require a conditional use for whichever parcel wants to be, machine shop in order for that to work. I would agree. Now, what that does is it does give the ability for the applicant to work with staff and figure out a way to make that work and not be a detriment to the area. Going M1 throughout the bat, it really doesn't give a lot of, parole is probably the right word, not really what we want necessarily say, but it does give the ability to kind of negotiate that out through, go to C3, through the conditional use process.
If, if you all had more time to meet with the, with the applicant, would your recommendation change on, on the disapproval for C3?
Probably have, is that Martinas Activity Center has, it's a hodgepodge. That's all there is to it. Currently, you could go either direction realistically, realistically wanted to, but staff, we haven't really been given direction on what to do with Martinis area. It doesn't include industrial, it does, doesn't include, or doesn't include commercial, it does. And so, we don't really have a clear, here is what both you guys and Board of Commissioners want to see in this area. Are there arguments for light industrial in this entire area back here? Absolutely. But, you know, long-term, is that what we want to see within Martinis? It's, it's what's already there, but again, there's stuff that's undeveloped that hasn't been touched yet. And, and you do have, you know, some creeping in of, you know, more commercial-type uses, like the one I was just pointing out here, is the, the, the daycare center. So, again, it's one that there's not really a, a clear direction for it. I wouldn't, could we get there? We probably could, but I'm not going to say that we would absolutely, you know, thumbs up, let's, let's do this thing.
Sterling, you have anything you'd like to add to that?
Well, I think to, to what Will was talking about, you know, introducing compatible uses is not desirable, and I think, you know, if they're existing, they have certain rights, and so we, we recognize those, but in a redevelopment scenario, which we do anticipate in the coming years throughout the Martinis Activity Center, how much of that new, you know, those new uses, do we want to be something that maybe is not consistent with where we're thinking it's going to go? And to Will's point, you know, part of that is, is we don't have a clear definitive direction on what that needs to be. That's part of why in the comp plan update, we've talked, you know, continue to talk about the Martinis redevelopment plan, looking at this at a much closer fine-grained scale, determining kind of what that direction the county wants to see this particular area go. So, I think, you know, where we have vacant properties, we want to be very careful about introducing incompatible uses. So, I think, you know, to your question, C3 is certainly a better alternative than M1. And again, M1 opens up a whole list of uses that probably are not compatible even with some of the other C3-type uses that are already there. That's probably a given, a hard, a hard no from staff's perspective, but C3 could work and is, is kind of a bridge gap, I guess, between the two. Are we going to see C2-type uses? I think if there were really a demand for this particular site, you probably would have already had that, and Mr. Bennett and his owner wouldn't be here tonight for their, for their request. So, I think there's some, some validity to the request. I think, you know, with the conditions that we've put out there for you to consider, deny, I think there's, there's a, there's a path forward.
Gentlemen, any questions, Mr. Bennett? Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? So, I'll close the public hearing, and gentlemen, we'll need a motion to approve the C3 or C2 use, no, C3. Use with conditions to deny or to table.
Here, I make a motion to approve C3 with conditions at a property at 253 Rose Street.
Go here second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor of approving C3? All opposed? Motion passes 4-1. Themselves a vote in favor?
Yes, sir.
Got it. All right, Mr. Butler, file RZ 210403.
The request for rezoning at 1635 Old Avenue Harlem Highway, currently split zone M1, Light Industrial and RA residential agricultural. My request is a rezoning to RA for the entire parcel, about 29.48 acres in total. This is the location of the property on the east side of Old Avenue Harlem Highway, and the current split zoning of the property. And you can see some across the street. That is a product of the 1973 rezoning along I-20 that we've all dealt with many times before this evening. The property up here was recently rezoned back in, I believe, February to remove that M1 along that, throughout the whole parcel. And this parcel here, if we can go to the next, actually, arrow first, if we go to the site, it shows the area, the plot of the property, and then also the, the development plan. Again, this was approved at the last meeting by the Planning Commission. It was able to be approved because they still meet lot structure for M1 or RA, and not really an issue there. As far as the future land use, this is within the neighborhood's character area before. Everything around it is more large lot residential, doesn't really lend itself to being R2 and probably not even R1. So, again, staff is very comfortable with the request to get rid of some, some, some split zoning in this situation, rezoning from M1 and RA to RA, our property. Staff recommends approval of the request.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Is the applicant here this evening? Okay, yes, sir. Would you like to come forward, give us your name and address, and, and give us any additional information? All right, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Yes, ma'am. Please come forward, give us your name and home address.
At 1615 Old Avenue Harlem Highway. But I was wondering where that's going. That affects us five houses, like the fourth one. Y'all got 5.78.
Okay, could we go back to the overhead and, and you can actually touch that screen? And if you could indicate where you are on this map? Or give us a close proximity?
I'm so sorry, I'm done with this. Probably right.
Okay.
There.
All right, so with Sterling or Mr. Butler, would you like to?
Sure.
Ms. McKinney's question?
Let's go to the zoning map real quick. So, you're currently zoned RA residential agricultural. You probably have more than two and a half acres, I would assume. This is going to change to the same zoning that you have. It's, it's removing this M1 right there, which is a light industrial zoning. That's all it's doing. In terms of the development plan, if we can go to that real quick, I think their smallest lot is 2.1, I believe it's this one, this is the smallest lot.
Five or 2.6.
Yeah.
Would, would one of y'all mind telling Ms. McKinney why there was so much M1 along I-20?
Sure. So, back in the 70s, I believe it was '73, the county rezoned along I-20, basically, I think it was, what, 700 feet, 700, somewhere around there?
Something like that.
There's a certain distance off I-20 that was rezoned to M1 for billboards. Uh, so over time, we've addressed that as we get requests to develop that area. Um, that's why you're seeing it. Um, again, you have neighbors up the street that are, I think their entire property is zoned M one, but they have a house on it. Um, another thing, too, in the past, this was not really addressed, um, but we are seeing now that, um, banks are getting a lot more involved with the zoning, and they say, is it split zone? You can't get a mortgage. That's why we're addressing a lot more of it as we move forward. Nothing I can tell you about that.
The short answer is you, you.
I'm not gonna lose my property.
You're not, no, ma'am, you're not gonna lose your property. You might have a few more neighbors, but they're gonna be on lots like yours.
Perfect, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for coming out. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve R Z twenty-one, four oh three from M one to R A.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. Ms. Montgomery, file R Z two one zero four zero four.
Yes, sir, this is a request for a rezoning from R one, single-family residential to C C, community commercial for seven fifteen and seven thirty-seven Furious Ferry Road. These parcels are located at the intersection of Furious Ferry Road and Blackstone Camp Road and are currently zoned R one. Um, there's kind of a mix of zoning districts around them. Generally, to the north, you have residential properties, to the south, um, immediately adjacent properties are residential, but they are just outside the, the commercial center. It's already developed at Evans Delox and Furious Ferry. This is the aerial of the site. There is an existing house on one of the properties, um, the other is undeveloped. And a photo of the existing site. And the view from Blackstone Camp Roads from the other side of the property. I know the applicants have indicated that their intention is to develop a restaurant on the site. It is obviously a, a bit of a tight site, so it's gonna take some careful site planning. Um, it is within the Evans Delox Activity Center, which is intended to provide for commercial uses such as shops and restaurants, um, so the proposed use does fit, um, perfectly, actually, within this Activity Center. It's, uh, one of the, the listed desired land uses. Um, this property will be within the Node Protection Overlay District as well if it is rezoned, so they will have to meet the, the architectural and site standards from that overlay, um, and we'll be dealing with the, the setbacks in relation to their site plan here in just a minute. Um, they will also be responsible for cost to extend sewer service to this property. It's currently on a septic system, but the Health Department has indicated that will not be sufficient for commercial development. Um, so staff is recommending approval, um, with the condition that the parcel must be connected to county sewer, that the properties must be combined, and the combination plat submitted within sixty days. And a condition regarding the landscape strip and the timeline for the installation, uh, Furious Ferry Road is getting ready to be widened, so there will be construction work along that road frontage, um, so letting them delay the installation of that landscape strip until that construction is complete. And that concludes the staff recommendation.
Could we go back to the overhead on the zoning map? You know about where the sewer's gonna come from?
Probably from that pud. They're probably gonna pull it from that development. Um, this neighborhood has sewer in it as well, but crossing Furious Ferry is probably not the easier way to get there. It's probably gonna come up Blackstone Camp.
I believe there's a force main along Furious Ferry, so that's probably not gonna work.
Have to go.
Good.
Have to go around underneath or over it, and that's direction, boring under Furious Ferry with a widening project coming through is, I mean, not desirable.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? Is the applicant here? Is there anything you'd like to add? All right. Uh, this is a public hearing. Uh, is there anyone that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, accept a motion to approve, uh, with conditions, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions, uh, R Z two one zero four zero four, rezoning from R one to C C at seven fifteen and seven thirty-seven Furious Ferry Road.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Question? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. Ms. Montgomery, we've got, uh, two variances tonight. You have the first, file V A two one zero four zero two.
Yes, sir, this is a variance to section ninety dash ninety-eight, list of lot and structure requirements, uh, related to the two properties we just looked at for rezoning. Um, so again, these properties are at the intersection of Furious Ferry and Blackstone Camp Road and are currently zoned R one, although they are under consideration for rezoning to C C. This is the aerial of the site and the existing house. Uh, now, if rezoned, these properties will be within the Node Protection Overlay District. Um, that overlay district has both minimum and maximum front setbacks, which means the building must be constructed within a certain distance of the road to comply with the code. Um, from Blackstone Camp Road, that requirement is ninety feet from the center line. From Furious Ferry Road, that is within a hundred and twenty-five feet from the center line. So, the yellow lines there represent the existing maximum front setbacks, and you can see with the existing right-of-way width from Blackstone Camp Road, it, it would be challenging to get the building close enough to meet that maximum, um, and to hit the maximum on Furious Ferry as well. Uh, they did submit a development plan showing how they can do this. It does push the building right up into the corner, which is a little bit awkward, but it does sort of work until you look at the road construction plans. Um, that hatched area is the construction easements related to the widening of Furious Ferry Road. They will not be able to build within that easement, which knocks out pretty much all of the space between those minimum and maximum setbacks on Furious Ferry, so they're not able to meet that maximum front setback requirement on either road frontage. Staff is recommending approval of the variance to remove the maximum front setback with the condition that that maximum front setback not apply along either road, um, the minimum front setback shall remain in effect. And that concludes staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff?
What's the purpose of the setbacks?
So, the purpose of having a maximum front setback in the overlay is to try and encourage the buildings to be pulled up to, to the road, to be a little more pedestrian oriented, not to have parking lots, um, as much in front of the buildings, but to encourage them to be located more to the sides or the rear, um, on this particular site, that, that's simply not gonna work.
Oh, it's, it's strictly aesthetic. It has nothing to do with utilities.
No.
Questions? Okay, gentlemen, do you all have anything you'd like to add? All right, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with conditions, uh, deny, or to table.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve V A twenty-one, uh, four oh two, the variance to, like, maximum front setbacks with.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? To approve carries five zero. And our last item in the public hearings, uh, portion of our agenda is file V A two one zero four zero one. Mr. Butler?
Thank you, this is a request for a variance. Our variance is section ninety-five three, list of lot and structure requirements. Ninety-nine is one forty-four, place of building and structures at one thirty-one South Belair Road, uh, currently zoned R two, single-family residential. This shows the location of the property on the west side of South Belair, the intersection of, what is the address of that, or the name of that road? Anyway, is it Pecan? Okay. Anyway, at Pecan and South Belair. Again, most of the, the property around it is zoned R two. You do have some sporadic, you know, P D Ds and a P one as well, uh, within the area. Also, arrow view of the site. What we're looking at tonight is this building here, this building here, this building here, and this building as well. So, the reason that we're seeing it, uh, code enforcement was involved with a complaint about water coming off of this building, um, onto the adjacent property at two eight Pecan Drive, and that kind of supports the, let's get an as-built of the property, find out where everything is, let's take care of variances if we need to. Um, that was when it was found about the, this, um, there's a setback of fifty-five feet from the center line of Pecan, uh, the house as well within that. Surprisingly, and again, this is where it's good to have, uh, some institutional knowledge from a long time ago, uh, a, a neighbor actually notified us that this was, there was a variance approved for this back in nineteen ninety-nine. As occasionally happens, I'll go ahead and tell you, our records from the nineties are interesting, be happy to show them to you. Not always the easiest things to find, you know, this does happen on occasion. However, the variance is still needed for, uh, this, um, addition here, and then also the other structures on the site, so the, the one from ninety-nine didn't cover everything. This shows the plot of the property, and also the existing site, and the as-built of the property. Again, so we're dealing with a shop here, um, that is a large shop. Um, it is definitely, um, bigger than most, uh, in terms of setbacks, you're looking at a ten-foot setback in R two. The only place it doesn't meet is on this corner. That's actually within a minor waiver, um, territory. There's the only problem on the site, we did a minor waiver for it, and it's all good. Uh, we will be talking about a condition to remove the framing that we'll see in a picture here in a moment, um, that there still could be the ability for somebody to throw some plywood or what have you on top of that, to have the, the water still leave the, um, this shop's roof and come on another property. Um, again, the roof has been removed, but the, um, uh, the supports have not been removed totally, uh, from that. In terms of, so you also have these two small canopies, we'll see photos of those, um, again, there, the setback is technically five feet for both of those. They're, you know, basically both within two feet of the property line. Um, this one up here is not really a concern. Um, this one over here, though, um, does have a roof that we'll see in a moment that pitches water towards this property here, and not part of the complaint, um, but we are asking for that to be rectified, just to be sure that we're not having an issue again with the property. In terms of setbacks, so we can see on this, uh, I guess within five feet, five, or five feet and three inches, uh, from the property line. We also have the front here that's about forty-four feet, uh, from, uh, center, or from the property line, uh, South Belair Road. This shows the fence, and also the house as well. Uh, the fence itself, so this is where the ninety-nine is one forty-four comes into play. This is a six-foot high fence, uh, pretty, again, pretty typical in the past that on corner lots, people would install a fence, base it all the way out to the street. Um, this is the same situation. Uh, it's been there for, we can tell, since about two thousand and seven, uh, this is far back as the arrows really go, before you can, it's not really seeing anything. Uh, it doesn't, it doesn't provide any, uh, safety issues from our standpoint. Uh, traffic wasn't really concerned with it, so we see really no issue, meaning, uh, we have a condition, uh, speaking about here in a moment. This again shows the shop, and you also see the other accessory building here. Oh, I'm gonna go with that real quick. You can also see the supports kind of over there in the, in the trees a little bit, not as visible as you'd like. You can skip over the next as-built, that's not important. And again, it shows the accessory structure here on the front of Pecan Drive. It shows the other side of it, showing kind of how it's constructed. Again, it's, it's a structure, but, you know, it's, doesn't really require, uh, any kind of permitting, but does have a setback. It shows the ones on the south side, again, this roof here, with it being pitched towards the, uh, the fence at the back, could have, uh, water leaving that roof onto the adjacent property. Overall, staff's recommend approval with the following conditions, uh, the building setback is just forty-four feet from the property line, property line along South Belair Road for this, for the existing home. Setback started along Pecan Drive and on the as-built that is February four, twenty twenty-one. Any future expansion or replacement of the existing home must meet building setbacks. Exposed roofing frame on the west side of the existing shop must be removed within sixty days of approval by the Board of Commissioners. Best stretch from the southern property line must be moved or have the roofing reconfigured, not show water directly onto the property to the south. Replacing e- e- either of the accessory structures as required, there must be building setbacks, and that'd be five feet. Uh, if the existing fences are placed, it must meet county code. What that would mean is you could have a, um, along that, you, you could actually build it out to the, closer to the road, but it'd have to be, I believe, it's always get this wrong, so if I get it wrong, one of you guys tell me. I believe it's, uh, thirty-six inches high along that frontage.
On that side, they could have four.
Four feet.
Four feet.
See, I always get it wrong. Um, and that, that should be all the conditions. That concludes staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? I've got one, if we could go back to either the overhead or the shot of the, uh, of the shop? Okay, so where the pavers are there, is that a curb cut? And is that permitted?
Well, we, we.
Does that would give two curb cuts on that one lot?
And you can have that.
Okay.
Now, we don't, again, we don't permit driveways at this point.
Okay.
And in the future.
And you could, you could have two driveways, because that gives them three driveways on that lot, one on
Yeah.
South Belair.
Have a, um, is it a wraparound or something?
It's a corner wrap. How high is this? How tall is it?
Couldn't tell you the height. Um, it did get a building permit, that's all we.
They, they did have a building permit?
They did. And the other thing.
And the permit said that they could build it, I mean, I'm looking at a six-foot fence and.
At least twelve, probably, door, yeah.
Now, here's the thing, is there's, the height limit's fifty-five feet in residential.
Fifty-five?
So, there's no requirement for this to be short.
But is there? Just, that's a big.
Yeah, so.
That's a big shed for your lawnmower right there.
Yeah, the structure itself is fine, it's just this issue here and that water that was shedding off into adjacent property. So, it's really just that structure there.
So, loo- loo- looking at old aerials, it looks like there was some sort of business that was being operated here. Um, again, that's, you don't really know, it just looks like it. Um, that may have been what was there before, you know, again, was known in the past was not always the best, but.
Wasn't there a letter or something about delivery trucks?
I believe there's been a statement from a, a neighbor about that.
About delivery trucks, right? On the, could we look at the conditions again, please? How, how are we gonna, how are we gonna reconfigure the roof so it doesn't shed water? Do we need to be more specific and have it gutted away, or what, what do we?
No, we're, we're, we're leaving it up to the applicant to figure how, how they want to do that. Again, probably the easiest thing is to do it, you can also drop the roof, you can also just drop the roof down like this. Changes how even, basically.
Or in the other direction, yeah.
Who, who has the approval of that?
That would be code enforcement, still have an open case.
Gentlemen, any other questions, staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, ma'am, would you like to come forward and give us any additional information? All right, thank you. Uh, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular variance? All right, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with conditions, uh, to deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions, file V A two one zero four zero one, variances to reduce the building setbacks for existing structures and allow the existing fence height.
Do your second?
Second.
Question? All in favor? Approved carries five zero. We have no text amendments, amendments, no additional items, no legal matters? Do we have any staff or commissioner comments?